All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Burlington School Board Forum conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnerships Government Relations Committee. My name is Eva Castillo with Hope Haven Area Development Center, and I will be your moderator for this evening. Our timekeeper is Rachel Lindine with the Greater Burlington Partnership. In the interest of time and fairness to other candidates, I'm going to ask each candidate to observe Rachel's signal and stop your response when time is up. The forum will consist of rounds of questions to which each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. A decision was made by the Government Relations Committee to have candidates answer the questions impromptu and at random. In other words, they have not seen the questions in advance. Each candidate has four questions out of a basket at random. Thank you to the candidates in attendance tonight. So let's start by having you introduce yourself and share why you are running for a seat on the school board. Let's start with Tammy.
Hi, my name is Tammy Anderson, and the reason why I'm running for a school board is, I have several reasons here. I want to be a voice for you guys and ask for the parents as well in our schools. I want to make communication good for everyone and make it a priority. I want to be able to support our teachers, our support staff and administrators as well. Also, I want to work as a team to find ways to continually improve our children's education and our experiences in our district. And also, I want to be an advocate for the rights of parents and to make educational and health decisions for their children.
Thank you. Kristi?
Hi, everyone, my name is Kristi Burkhafer. I was raised in this area and am a graduate of BHS myself. I worked at the elementary level for five years and am now a stay-at-home mom to four boys, the oldest of which is a 2021 BHS grad. Both my work experience and role as a mom to school-aged children allow me to have a multifaceted view for decision-making. Anyone that knows me knows that I have a genuine heart for the needs of people. I'm dependable, a great listener, and stand strong in my convictions and beliefs. I do not bend when things become difficult. I'm also known for my thorough research and diligence studying all I can about a topic. This is a quality that I feel will be very beneficial to this position as my decisions are not emotionally driven or for personal gain. I desire to see the focus of our schools, return to education, and the well-being of all areas of our children. In my house, we use the phrase, "If there's a problem, we fix it." And I would welcome the opportunity to use this for the district.
Thank you. Darvin?
Good afternoon, my name is Darvin Kendall, and I'm a lifelong Burlington resident. I work for the DMC Regional Waste Commission, and my children are products of the Burlington School District with my daughter graduating in May of this year. My family's roots are deep in public education, and I have always been passionate about volunteerism and the importance of giving back to our community. I truly believe that our best school board members are compassionate and empathetic, dedicated to listening and learning, committed to using tax dollars wisely, focused on appropriately seeking input from parents, staff, and faculty, and the public, and yet always mindful that our district serves thousands of students and their families, and aware that the district serves those students who come from a diverse background, cultures, goals, and needs. I think it is important that board members work collaboratively with our district's leadership to do what is best for every student and to be aware that the decisions made by the collective board impact all students and all families, as well as the over 600 individuals who work for our district.
Thank you. Scott?
Hi, my name is Scott Mason. I am currently employed at Farm Bureau Financial Services in Tim Lundgren's office. I'm a lifer. I've lived here my entire life, save for a couple of my college years when I went to Western Illinois and Iowa. I graduated from here in 1990. I have stayed close to Burlington High School and the school district, whether it's been as the trinity officer for 13 years until a year ago, or on the radio on Friday night, if you tune in for the football game, you hear my voice. I'm very connected, and I'm very interested in being a part of the school board in order to try and impact change. I think there's a very underserved market, if you will, in terms of those who feel like their voices are not being heard, and unfortunately, that's our faculty and our staff. And so, I want to be a voice for them. You know, I love kids, I want to see them succeed, and I very much would like to be a part of seeing our district continue to grow and serve as a voice for those on the inside.
All right, thank you. We need you all to speak up so our listeners at home can hear. Okay, so you can't speak too loud. You cannot. Go with round one. Okay, so round one. Who wants to start? Let's start with Scott.
Is it because I made eye contact? That always did not serve me well in class.
Oh, it's good, it's good.
You look at the teacher and they go, "Scott."
So speak up.
Okay, I can predict. Superintendent Pat Cohen has announced his retirement at the end of this school year. If elected, you'll be part of the board responsible for selecting the next superintendent. What skills and traits do you think will be important when making this selection? Well, first and foremost, I think it's got to be a selection that best fits our district and its needs for right now. You know, I think a superintendent who will effectively communicate with his or her staff, with his or her employees, is going to be paramount. There is a, from being on the inside for 13 years, I truly believe there is a morale issue at the heart of a lot of the things that are talked about on the periphery. And I'm not going to pin it on any one person, I'm not going to pin it on any one group of individuals, but it needs to be acknowledged at some point. And I think that, as much as anything, the next superintendent has to be willing to sit down and hear what's being said and understand the emotions from what is being said come from. Again, I'm not going to say Mr. Cohen didn't do that effectively, but I'm saying moving forward, that has to be something that absolutely has to be taken into account. There are voices that need to be heard, and I don't know that they feel, those being the faculty, that they're being heard enough. And so, in addition to just being kind of the tip of the spear, so to speak, that's going to lead this school district in the direction that we as a community, we as a school community and a community of Burlington need it to go and give our kids the best opportunity to succeed.
All right, thank you. Kristi?
What should our school district be doing to ensure the safety of our students and staff? This is a very broad topic, I believe, as far as safety. When I asked the community about their concerns with the district, safety was the number-one complaint, concern, I would say, both at the middle school and at the high school levels. A lot of fighting, even emotional issues. So I would say that really needs to be addressed. What is causing such a jump in behaviors from the elementary level to those fifth and sixth grade years and then again at the high school? So really, I don't know, sitting down with teachers and seeing where they see the issues lie would be important. Like you said, really hearing what the people, day in and day out, facing it, are viewing going on. As far as the health standpoint, I think what we're doing is the best that we can do. I've always had the motto, "You do what you can with what you know." And that is kind of a fluid thing, you know? Our response at the beginning was, "Well, boy, let's get these kids in a safe environment back at home." And I think now with more data coming out, we really need to look at what is best physically, but also socially, emotionally, and mentally.
All right, thank you. Darvin?
Question number one. What do you see as the Burlington Community School District's strengths and celebrations, and how can the district build on those? We have a lot of wonderful and exciting things that have happened in this district just in the last couple of years, really. Even with COVID, we managed to implement a successful online learning program. We have a fantastic Early Childhood Center now, and of course, Early Childhood Center. We have expanded our partnerships and our offerings with Southeastern Community College. It is very possible for high school students to graduate with an associate's degree before they actually graduate with their diploma. Our graduation rates have improved and increased dramatically in the last few years. And there's just a lot of great things that are going on. We've maintained our arts programs and our music despite some budget challenges. We still are able to offer band and orchestra and art classes throughout our district. And there's a lot of great things that we are able to do that not other districts are able to do. So I think we have many things that we can do. And to build on those, I think it's just a matter of solidifying the Course Early Childhood Center, recruiting people for it, letting people see how great it is, and telling our story as a district and letting people know of the truly wonderful things that happen within our walls.
All right, thank you. Tammy?
Hey, what makes you proud to be a part of the Burlington community and proud of our schools? I would say, I like the smaller town setting. I like the teachers that we have. I mean, I've had kids in all three schools, and I feel that they are, you know, they're very caring towards our kids, and they want what's best for our kids. And I'm thankful that, you know, I know there's, with COVID and everything, there's a lot of people that are worried and things, and our teachers are really there for us, and they're being supportive, and they're doing what they can for our children, you know, to help them with some of the difficulties that they might be having emotionally. And, you know, they're just being supportive, and I just enjoy being a part of Burlington. I work for the city of Burlington as well, and I just enjoy the small community that we have and, you know, how we get together and support each other.
All right, that's the end of round one. So round two, Will Smith.
Hi, William Smith of the Burlington Beacon. Just kind of a two-part question. How does the school district handle COVID going forward? And what are your thoughts on mask mandates? Thank you.
Darvin?
Moving forward, the board is looking at implementing a tier system for masks and mask usage. There'll be something on the agenda next week to kind of talk about that a little bit further. The first idea came up at the last board meeting. And that tier system will be based on the spread rate, the COVID spread rate for our community as determined by the Iowa Department of Public Health. We posted on their website. As far as the mask mandates, that's a very tough question because I truly believe parents have the right to do and choose what they feel is best for their student and their child. The issue becomes when that child enters a building with 400 other people, or 500 other people, or 800 other people. Then the collective good of the safety of that entire group kind of falls onto me in a different level and different area, and falls to the administration, to the school board, to make sure that the collective safety of that entire group is as safe as it possibly can be based on current guidelines or recommendations. And the recommendations locally from our local hospital or local medical professionals, as well as the national associations, are that masks are effective. They don't eliminate the risk of COVID, but they definitely help to minimize and mitigate the risk a little bit. So hopefully, we can get to where we don't have to use them. But for now, I think it's something that we need to have in place.
Reminder to speak up, please. Tammy?
Again, I really feel like it should be a choice of whether a mask or worn or not. We started after school year where there was no mask, and everyone did really well. If they chose to wear a mask, they were able to do that. As for what I could tell, the majority did not wear masks. There might have been a couple in each class here and there, but they had that choice, and that, I totally agree with. They should have that choice. I just don't, with the research that I have done, I just feel the mask mandates, it's just, for one, it's not healthy for our children. We don't have long-term information out there showing, you know, what it could do to some of our children. I've talked with some teachers about the emotional, and not even just our district, emotionally, the anxiety they're going through. They don't know how to deal when they go outside of the school, what they should do. I really feel it should be a parent's choice and a child's choice together to make that decision. We should have our freedoms, and I understand what people have that maybe have autoimmune kids, but I've also talked with a parent that has a child with autoimmune, with different issues, that has special needs, and that child, she feels, does much better without masks because he needs to be able to communicate, he needs to see facial expressions from other children. And I know right now that not everyone is following that in the school. So that's kind of how I feel about that.
Scott?
You know, as far as what's currently in place, I am very supportive of the board and the plan that they're going to operate under a tier system only because when you're trying to hit a moving target, you need to have some sort of outline to follow so that there's consistency. And so, I commend the board on trying to come up with something that hopefully finds a way to become a compromise between the maskers, if you will, and the people who are not in support of a mask mandate. As far as the mandate goes, you know, to me, any argument that I have or discussion, it starts with, there really, I don't think, is a right answer because there are two sides of the fence when it comes to science, when it comes to politics, when it comes to the me versus you. I can produce a paper that says masks are effective, and so is the vaccine, and you'll produce two that say they're not. So it's just, it becomes a circular argument that no one really wins as a right answer to, or anything like that. I will not budge from what I said in the paper, which was, I'm in support of the mask mandate, if only because in my science, what I've researched, just like Tammy has researched, her own researched, and I've talked to my pediatrician, my son and daughter's pediatrician, a doctor of mine, and a nurse who say masks are effective. So that's what I would choose to believe, and it's not political. It's about, when I look in the mirror, am I comfortable with what I would decide?
Kristi?
Very tough question. Like you said, there are arguments on both sides, there is data on both sides, and, again, I truly feel it comes down to what you, as a family unit, believe is best for your family. And I stand firmly with that. It is up to the parents to know health-wise what's best for them. My middle son has a condition with low muscle tone, and it causes him to drool. His mask is wet within two minutes of wearing it. It was not in the best interest of my family to have him in school wearing a mask for hours, breathing that in. So we had to make the tough choice to bring him home. Do I want to send him back? Absolutely. But that's the beauty of this, is that everybody should be able to decide. At the beginning of the school year, everyone did have that choice. And the percentages, I would say, within the district, each building that had their children wearing masks was very minimal. And I think that represents what people truly want. They want the choice to be able to do what's best for them and what's safe for their children.
All right. Onto round three, then. So let's go with Kristi.
What do you believe is the first priority of public education? I would say the first priority is education, is teaching our kids how to read, math. They learn social skills through play and things, but a priority is the education. And as they get older, I feel preparing them for the real world. That education is not just reading and math. It is those kids that don't want to go to college and really giving them a foundation into what is available outside of college, the trades, really preparing them to be an adult, how to problem-solve, interact with their classmates. It really just grows educationally, onto socially, teaching them they're part of a community, whether that's a classroom or the city, how to be involved, productive citizens. But I think that the focus gets lost in all these other little topics and issues that should be left to the family to decide what their children are going to be introduced to. I'd say, education should be the priority.
Tammy?
What do you see as a district's areas for growth? Or what do you see as a district's areas for growth? What solutions would you propose? I think on this question, I was kind of looking up on the Board of Education side a little bit, kind of just seeing where we were in some of the different levels compared to other schools in Iowa. We were pretty low with a lot of our things that we needed to work on. And so, I think that, you know, we need to look as a group, as a school board, how that we can find ways to, I'm sure we're working on that now, but how to find more ways to get to our children, to help them with their reading, their math, whatever they may be struggling in, to find areas that we can, you know, that will help improve that. So...
All right, Scott?
Okay, let's see here. Number 11, or equal sign, whichever you want. An individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to effective operations of the board as a whole? Well, I think, you know, for one, I've always prided myself on having big shoulders and big ears, so I think I'll be a good listener. And I don't think that's just restricted to the voices that I hear on the board. I am very thankful that I have a fairly extensive wide net of friends and colleagues that, at various times in their lives, have probably leaned on me and trusted me with information, whatever it may be. So first and foremost, I think you have to have a willingness to learn from what you hear. I think just having the insight, having been in the buildings for 13 years will help me. Having been a coach for the better part of 20 years off and on within the baseball program at Burlington High School and as the bowling coach will help me. I know how kids think. I'm removed, I'm 30 years removed, I hate to say that, but I'm not so removed that I don't understand where kids are coming from. I have two kids, one who's a freshman in high school. So, you know, I think I've got a perspective that many of us share because we've had kids or have kids going through right now. But I think most, first and foremost, a willingness to listen, and then the conviction to take what you hear and make decisions that best fit the situation that you're thrust into, and then being able to stand by those decisions as they inevitably will come into question.
Darvin?
Number 10. What should our school district be doing to ensure the safety of our students and staff? Well, again, that's a broad question. So I'll tackle this from a couple of different angles. As far as safety, you know, we try very hard to keep our buildings safe. You have to be buzzed in, you have to, staff have to wear tags so you know who they are. Our bus drivers do a fantastic job of transporting kids to and from school, making sure that they're safe. So from that aspect, we try very hard to keep the children safe in the buildings and when they're there, and we pray that nothing bad would happen. From a health standpoint, we try very hard to keep our buildings clean. Our staff does a fantastic job. Worked extremely hard in the past year sanitizing our buildings and keeping them clean. And then, among the students themselves, has been alluded to, you know, there are some issues sometimes. Students bring stuff in from their community, they bring drama in. They bring stuff that they, kind of like Facebook or social media posts from a lot of the students, and they take exception to it. So I think it's important for staff to try to listen and hear what's going on and try to prevent as much of that as we can. And we do have some pretty good relationships with some of the staff and some of the students to try to prevent some of that. We can't prevent everything, but I think the effort's there and the intent is there to try to make sure the staff or people, teachers and staff, students can talk to them and tell them what's going on if they have concerns.
Thank you. All right, round number four. Four. I've kind of lost count there for a second. All right, Tammy, let's start with you.
Number one. What do you see as Burlington Community School District's strengths and celebrations? How can the district build on those? Well, I know, I guess I have three kids, and I have one at Blackhawk, I have one at Aldo, and I have one at BHS. So I've kind of had some experience with a few different schools. Their strengths, I... I think that... I think that, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous here. Again, I think the teachers would be something that I would say is one of our strengths. Many of the teachers at Blackhawk, for one, they, I think they're very, very good teachers. They care about our students. And I think having good teachers in our school and enough teachers is very important. And so, I would like to build on maybe that, getting more, seeing if we're able to provide more teachers because I think we're running low on that. It also would help some of the other teachers sometimes when they need to be out for something or things at their school, or just other issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darvin?
Number six. Superintendent Pat Cohen has announced his retirement at the end of this school year. If elected, you'll be part of the board responsible for selecting the next superintendent. What skills and traits do you think will be important when making this selection? I have a little bit of experience in hiring the superintendents, and I think that will be helpful moving forward to look back upon what we did and how we handle it, and the good and the bad, that we can take away from those times that we've hired superintendents before. And looking at what we want to have in the new superintendent, I think it's really important to talk with the community, to talk with the staff, to figure out, you know, what they liked or maybe did not like about our current superintendent and what we can look for going forward, what kinds of things we're missing, what kinds of things would we like to be, you know, enhanced. I think we absolutely have to have somebody who is welcoming of the diversity of our district, is willing to reach out to all facets of our student population and all facets of our community. We probably want somebody who is engaged in our community, and I think we've had that in the past. But I think as far as what we're looking for in the selection process, it's going to be really important to meet with staff, meet with the community, and the board talk amongst themselves, too, to figure out what the priorities are. You know, what are the top things that we're looking for? What are the things that we're looking for on the fringe so that we can have a successful hire for our next superintendent?
Scott?
It's because I looked at you.
You did it again, yep. See what happened?
It's Kristi's turn. All right. In your opinion, what is the biggest issue facing the school district? And what would you like to see accomplished during your term in that regard? Well, again, from my perspective, I'm being from the inside for 13 years. I think unfortunately, right now, there is a bit of a disconnect between parents and their individual schools, be they instructors, be they administrators, school board, super tight. There's a disconnect. And so, first and foremost, I think there's got to be a sense of, I like to use the term, like a tug-of-war. We've all got to be pulling in the same direction. We've got to figure out what our goals are as a district, and then there's got to be buy-in. And I know that's a cliche term that us coaches use, but in reality, that's what it is. Everybody associated, from the student to the teacher to the building administrator to the parent at home, needs to understand what the goals are, and all of us go in that same direction. I can tell you, one of the frustrations being married to a teacher, and I'm sure Darvin would say the same thing, sometimes there is a belief that in those seven and a half hours, a teacher can do everything in their power to do what we have perceived to be right and the direction we want to go, and it can all be undone in 16 and a half when that kid goes home. So I think, first and foremost, there's got to be transparency, communication, use your term of the day for what has to happen, but there's got to be some sort of agreement and understanding with all parties involved that we all have to move in the same direction to truly achieve what we want to achieve.
Kristi?
What makes you proud to be part of the Burlington community and proud of our schools? I think there's a lot that makes me proud for both, one, being a graduate of VHS, being involved in the athletics, the community that that brings. When I had children, I wanted to live in this city. And we actually kind of broke the mold and withdrew our son from a smaller school and put him into the Burlington district in seventh grade. So just really loved everything that it had to offer as far as for his needs, more of the AP classes, the college track. He wanted a bigger school for athletics. So it's just, you feel that grayhound spirit, the pride that goes into being a part of something bigger than yourself. The people here are just wonderful in our experience, the teachers we absolutely loved, just have had really, really great experiences with it and just proud to be from Burlington.
All right, final round. We're going to start with Mr. Kendall.
All right, number nine. What policies can the school board put into place or programs can you support to ensure career pathway opportunities for students? That's a great question. Because the board does set policies. So I think policies that support what the students are wanting to do is paramount. And at this time, we're looking at enhancing the trades program. We have a fantastic welding program at our school. We have excellent performing arts programs as well. And I think anything that the board can do to support that is really important. And if that's funding, if that's staffing, if we're short on staff in certain areas, the board is obligated to do whatever we can to support those students and what they're wanting to do so that they can achieve. Working with SCC has worked out very well for us and we have some fantastic partnerships with them. The board is constantly looking at different things that we can do. And a lot of these things are, come to the board through the curriculum, so we don't necessarily find these things on our own. But the building administrators' curriculum can bring these things to the board, you know, these are suggestions, these are things that people want to do. If parents have ideas for things that they want their students to be doing, the board should be willing to listen and put into place the things that are necessary to make that happen.
Thank you. Tammy?
In your opinion, what is the biggest issue facing the school district and what would you like to see accomplished during your term in that regard? On this one, I would probably agree with Scott on that one. I think communication is one of our biggest issues. I think that's with any place that you work. I think there is a disconnect between the teachers, their parents, school administration. And I think sometimes what's communicated maybe at a board meeting doesn't necessarily always get communicated, or the teachers may not understand completely about what, you know, what is being done, may interpret it different, understand it different. I've kind of noticed that with just different things. So I think that we definitely need to improve that communication, just, you know, the best that we can, like when we do something as a school board, you know, we need to make sure we make that contact with those teachers, with those principals, and make sure that they understand what it is, what our goal is, whatever we're trying to accomplish, that they understand and that that gets put out to all the teachers. During conferences, I talked to a couple of teachers about some of that thing, just ask them how they felt things were going and everything. And some of that, the questions or things that they were concerned about was, they didn't always know, you know, there was a lack of communication and they were a little confused about what actually was being required and needed to be done.
Kristi?
An individual school board member has no authority, only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to effective operations of the board as a whole? I feel like one of my better character traits is my ability to listen and really listen actively and openly to what someone is saying and really hear them. I also feel that a lot of my circle is, there's quite a bit of variety in there, so it's not one set group. I've really had variety in my education, as well as my employment, to really connect with different groups of people. My work experience, whether at the elementary level or tutoring at the Maple Leaf Center, just being able to work with staff and parents, church members, I think really would help in working with board members and being able to listen and collaborate for the common good and not my own personal view.
All right, Scott?
Number four. Why do you want to be a member of the Burlington School Board? Wish I'd have gotten this one first because it would have eased me in some. You know, first and foremost, because I want to give back. Most everything I've done as a part of this district outside of my actual employment has been to give back to the community and the school district that's given so much to me, whether it was getting into coaching right out of college or doing PA or being play-by-play or being active in the schools before I was hired. You know, I just want to make a difference. I want to be somebody that this community can look at and be proud that I represent them. And I want to be a difference maker. And one of the most important decisions I think that we're going to make in the next 20 years is the hiring of the next superintendent. It may very well determine the direction that this district will go. And what I mean by that is, you know, one of the issues I think we're facing that maybe doesn't get discussed as much as kids leaving the district is faculty leaving the district. There's, you know, obviously a lot of years you're going to have retirements, but there have been teachers who have made choices to leave the BCSD, and we need to figure out why that is. And so I'd like to be a part of that little micro part of this whole process. But in one phrase, the reason I want to be a part of this board is to give back and to do something for my community.
All right, we are going to do closing statements. So each candidate now has the opportunity to make a 60-second closing statement. We will start with Darvin. I know you didn't.
As a board member, I've always tried to educate, made educating myself about issues a top priority, and I've tried to serve this board in a responsible, holistic manner, always mindful that the decisions made by the board impact thousands of students and thousands of families in our community. I'm excited to work with the board, staff and community in the selection of our next superintendent. I'm also energized at the possibilities that an updated and remodeled high school facility can bring to future VHS students, along with our current offerings that provide our students with more course options than any other high school in a 60-mile radius. I want to help enhance partnerships with local businesses and expand the opportunities that we currently have with SCC for our students. I would like to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership for hosting this forum this afternoon, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November 2nd so that I can continue working on behalf of the Greater Burlington community.
Kristi?
First, thank you so much for putting this on and really giving us a chance to share our thoughts in person. It's more nerve-wracking, but very nice to be able to speak personally instead of writing it down for the paper. And I will say, with your vote, I give you my word that I will listen and truly hear your concerns. I will dedicate the time necessary to research and to make informed decisions. I will work to bring focus back to educational goals of our school system, and I will communicate and collaborate with teachers, staff members, the community and other board members to work towards solutions for enrollment and safety concerns in our district. And finally, I will not waver in defending the rights we have as parents, community members and Americans.
Tammy?
I would just like to thank everyone here for allowing us this opportunity to be able to talk in person. I enjoy in-person much more than trying to write things on paper and everything. And I kind of want to reiterate some of the things I said at the beginning. I want to be a voice for you and your children in our schools. I want to make communication a priority. I want to support our teachers, our staff and our administration, let them know and earn their trust. I want to advocate for the rights of parents to make educational and health decisions for their children. And I want to work as a team with the school board to find ways to continually improve our children's education. And I would appreciate your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Scott?
So first off, I will echo what they said. Thank you for putting this on. It is hopefully nice that you can put a face with the voice. You know, every single one of us who are running, even additionally the three who couldn't make it tonight, we're here for the reasons that we believe are right. We're here to give every opportunity we can to the kids we care about and the adults that we know that work is a part of this district. And the four people up here, I don't think any of us have given any reason to anybody to think we're not here. So I give my respect to the others who are willing to put themselves on the line, just as I am. If I happen to be one of the top three on November 2nd, the one thing that I will absolutely promise is that I will make decisions with our team on the board that hopefully benefit everybody. And if not everybody, a reasonable compromise, and I just look forward to serving.
All right. So I want to thank each of you all for your interest in serving in the Burlington community by running for the seat on the school board. I want to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership and the Government Relations Committee and those in the audience here for your interest. Please vote for the candidates of your choice on November 2nd.